Let's start these. One is full of pack, so we're just gonna go with Matthew because we all know this prayer. Matthew six and nine, so I would ask that everyone do this prayer together with me. The Lord is my shepherd, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done. Amen. In this day and time, to remember. And because our trespasses, as we be good builders, who trespass against us, and he is not, participation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Great.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Constitution, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a special presentation for two outgoing members to be given by our city manager. Brenda, can you come up front, please?
I'm smiling behind my mask. Hey, y'all.
She's smiling. She's smiling behind the mask. We wanted to give a little token to you, well, should be a big one for 21 years of being on council, but the mayor, the deputy mayor, and staff would like to present you with this, and I'll read it off to you. It's actually crystal, so don't drop it. Says an appreciation and recognition for your 21 years of serving on the Avon Park City Council, both as a council member and as a deputy mayor. Brenda Gray, thank you for your timeless service and dedication to the citizens of Avon Park. Your commitment is truly appreciated from January of 2001 to November of 2021. Wow.
Thank you so much. I appreciate this. I appreciate this very much, council. Welcome you all. I ain't gonna miss y'all, but hey. Just remember, just take this serious because it is serious. I welcome you guys, and I know you're gonna do a great job. I appreciate it, and thank you all so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Brenda. No one else needs this, so you're gonna get this.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one from Maria. She said she tried to make it, but I'll see her here. And I'm gonna say, well, that's it, but it isn't because I got the staff and I said, should we give Shirley one? She was actually appointed, and they said, you had better give her one. And one of them says, I love Shirley. She'd get one, so Shirley. Here's a little different shape. It's not crystal, but it's cool looking now.
I like classic things.
It's not plastic. It's classic. It's the real thing. In appreciation for your willingness to serve the citizens of Avon Park by being appointed to fill a vacancy on the Avon Park City Council, February of 2021 to November of 2021. Councilmember Shirley Johnson, thank you for all the kindness and caring you showed to the city employees.
I think.
Thank you. And to the new council members, welcome aboard. Decisions are in your hand. Serve with your heart. And just do, I mean, know you're gonna do a wonderful job. A wonderful job. My love to each and every one of you, to the citizens of Avon Park. Thank you for allowing me to serve you. I enjoyed it. It was a great ride.
Now for the swearing in. I'm gonna take these one at a time, right?
Yeah.
In particular order.
Please raise your right hand. I state to me.
Brittany McGuire.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support.
Honor, protect, and defend.
Honor, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States and of the state of Florida.
The Constitution and government of the United States and the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
And under the charter of the city of Avon Park.
And under the charter of the city of Avon Park.
And that I will well and faithfully, and that I will well and faithfully perform the duties of council member.
Perform the duties of council member on which I am now about to enter. So help me God.
On which I am now about to enter. So help me God.
I state to me.
Michelle Markham.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm that I will support.
Or affirm that I will support.
Honor, protect, and defend. The Constitution and government of the United States and of the state of Florida.
The United States and of the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office. Under the Constitution of the state. And under the charter of the city of Avon Park. And that I will well and faithfully. Perform the duties of council member. On which I am now about to enter. So help me God. On which I am now about to enter. So help me God. Thank you.
You raise your right hand. Brittany McGuire. I state to me. Bernice Taylor. Do solemnly swear or affirm. Do solemnly affirm. That I will support. That I will support. Honor, protect, and defend. Honor, protect, and defend. The Constitution and government. The Constitution and government of the United States and of the state of Florida. Of the United States and of the state of Florida. That I am duly qualified to hold office. And I am duly qualified to hold office. Under the Constitution of the state. Under the Constitution of the state. And under the charter of the city of Avon Park. And under the charter of the city of Avon Park. And I will well and faithfully, and that I will well and faithfully perform the duties of council member. Perform the duties of council member on which I am now about to enter. So help me God. On which I am now about to enter. So help me God.
Thank you very much, and welcome new council members. This time, if we could get a roll call.
Councilmember McGuire. Councilmember McCair. Here. Councilmember Taylor. Here. Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Here.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
We have a board.
According to the rules and regulations, this is a organizational meeting, so we will need to pick the deputy mayor at this time. So it's my suggestion that, again, go with Councilman Jim Bernard as the deputy mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? The now will call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember McCair.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. All right, private number six. We have all of the various city boards. I only have two requests thus far. There's a lot of boards to turn around. I'm open shot. Councilwoman McGuire has requested to be on the TDC. And Councilman Jim Bernard requests the CRA. So we have quite a few there. We'll go through them one by one, starting in front. We have the Agricultural and Labor Program E. So this is something that was formerly held by Councilmember Brenda Gray. Don't know a lot about it. It is a new one. I don't have the meeting times in front of us. Do we know any more about the meeting times?
I guess some are just their quarter.
Quarterly. And I guess if you have any questions, you can ask Brenda Gray. But do we have any suggestions for the board? Any volunteers? Nobody else? Do you have one?
I would like to.
Oh, Bernice said she liked it, so I'm not like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would like to.
Passing on.
Bernice gets the first. Thanks. You got the Avon Park Fire Pension Board. Mayor by mayor, I believe that Dr. Flores is leaving in January, so there will be opening up soon for that place. It's also true that we have a lead on that one, right?
Yes, I think that.
Jim, number two. The Avon Park Housing Authority. Again, this was recently held by Brenda Gray. I myself have served on that board a couple times. Do you have any volunteers? It's the third Tuesday of each month. Meeting times are at 5:15 p.m. I'll dump it once. I don't want to. Doesn't have one so far. I went. But you can basically everybody's probably. Police Pension Board. Aren't they right after each other?
Oh, yeah, same thing.
Yeah. Community Redevelopment Agency. There. P&amp;Z Liaison. Be playing and zoning.
Or pack. I was recently appointed to this, but we don't need a liaison.
And that conclusion. So we have Bernice with the Agricultural Board. We've got Jim on fire and police pensions, as well as the one decision. We already. We've got Shelley for the Housing Authority. We've got Brittany for the planning and zoning. As well as TDC. And that is it. So these can change, basically, as the council seats fit. Typically, you'll serve for at least a year. Mostly, they're all leave on positions, so taking notes and conveying, which is from the councils at the board. But more or less taking notes. You obviously can't act alone, you know, and find what the board always wants. So more or less just taking notes and more and being able to So that would be my, uh, my motion. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll be after a second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any questions? The now will call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember McCair.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor. This Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
So one board, I just remembered, was not mentioned, is the Harlem Harlem TPO, which is the DOT Board that meets at the county. That's something that I'm currently sitting on, and I would like to keep that position. So I'll make a motion to that effect.
I'll make a motion. I move to keep that position current.
There's, we have a, we have a motion. I guess that'd be a second, Jim.
Okay.
Do we have a motion and a second? Are there questions? The now will call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember McCair.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, that is all our preliminary things that I have. Staff, do you have anything else?
Just one. Could we move Peyton front of seven? Frankie said he has to be over in Tampa by nine.
Sure. All right, we'll move on to item number eight. This will be an event request for Donaldson Park by Frankie Grover, who's with the Kiss radio station for the bicycle giveaway. Frankie, if you can come up, please.
Good evening. Um, we've been doing this for about, I think, five years. I'm continuing to do it. And of course, the insurance goes. I'm working on getting that taken care of also. And we do it the first Saturday, then the first, the last Saturday before Christmas. We do with bicycle toys and food and all that, and everything is for I think it's great that you do that. Appreciate you. Did all the help too. I'll volunteer and donate.
Thank you very much. The new council members, would you like to go over exactly what you're requesting from the city?
I'd like to city to provide the park. I do that every year. And I would like to donate some bicycles this year if you would. I mean, if that's possible, that would be great.
So I didn't see any request for a specific dollar amount. Do you have a specific amount that you're requesting?
For us to donation for the bikes, bikes, 2025 bikes.
Which would be how much?
Uh. Looking at I don't have a calculator. Up the top of my head, you're looking at about $50 a bag, I would say.
Okay.
Are you looking for bikes that are all sizes, like from smaller to the larger ones?
All sizes. But basically, we do with little kids and no school kids.
You purchase new bicycles first?
Yes.
Yeah.
Walmart is one of my major sponsors. Alco, Newco Steel is one of my sponsors also.
So you're looking for a request of roughly $1,000 from the
Yeah, we're gonna keep it to a dollar figure.
Right. So the request is for $1,000 or more. You are a nonprofit organization?
The organization I'm working with is a nonprofit organization.
Okay.
Needs to be a 501(c)(3).
I work with this organization.
501(c)(3) for
If you could come up and clarify, please. She says she would love to. I saw the big smile on her face.
Brenda Gray, 421 two lane drive. Mr. Grover had asked the organization to sponsor it, but the board, unfortunately, and I had not had the opportunity to get back with him to inform him of this. The board had did not deny his request, so I cannot obligate that. I am so sorry.
Okay. But I'm, I'm doing the donations with you, your organization, correct? Because I need to know the proper organization to do donations to.
Through, through Walmart, yes.
Right, yeah, yes.
But that was it.
Yes.
They didn't want to do anything else.
So there's no work, there's no nonprofit for the funds to go to, is what you're telling me?
Yes. They went through her? Okay.
No. Requested that through the board of directors, and they declined his request. So no, there is not money through Southside Communities.
If you don't have, I'm from the 501(c)(3), that's still needs my recommendation if she goes. Oh, unless it's 501(c)(3). And so, the Honorable General's Recommendation. To Florida.
So what day are you doing this on?
December 18th.
December 18th. So we do have a council meeting before December 18th. Do you think that it's likely possible that you could have a 501(c)(3) organization to accept the money and/or make this official request?
Well, I thought I did. I'm not really confusing it up.
Right.
Okay, I thought I looked
What I'm saying is that there's another opportunity for me. I mean, the council
Oh, oh, we found the council.
Right. So we clearly want to approve this, as you can see. But we have to have a 501(c)(3) in order to actually make the request and for the money to go to.
All right, that's not
So at our next meeting, if you could please get that information with a name and a LLC 501(c)(3) for us to give that to, then I'm sure you'll probably get your approval.
Not a problem at all. I can get that worked out.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
We want to support you, that's for sure.
All right. And we think it's a great event that you've been doing. We really appreciate it. It's just, obviously, we have, the money has to go to a 501(c)(3). We don't have the choice.
And I mean, I think this really involves your donation of money for bikes, so you can still prove the other aspects of what you requested.
Okay.
As long as it's a nonprofit. That's, that's not a problem. I'm saying.
We can prove that.
You're okay with us approving that you have the park at this point?
Park.
Yeah, okay. All right. So is there a motion to that effect?
I move, I move we go ahead and approve item number V8 for the request for Christmas toy giveaway to be held at Donaldson Park on December 18th, 2021.
Is there a second? So we have a motion and a second. Just to be clear for the council members, there was not an official request made for fundage at this point. So the actual official request was for the use of the park, and that's something that we can approve at this time. Mr. Grover is gonna come back to us at our next council meeting and request the actual funds, if he can get a 501(c)(3) to take the funds. Okay?
Last part? What you do, Frankie?
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any questions or anybody need clarification?
I have some questions for Mr. Grover.
Yes.
Um, sir, what is the procedure of how child receive the gift? Every child that shows up get a gift or by age, how does that work? Because I've been up there a couple of times, and that's a lot of children. So I was just trying to figure out, how does, how does it work?
Well. First folks in line, what we doing this year is gonna be different. We giving one bag per family this year. Last year, I think we got two or three bags for family, and we didn't have enough bags to go around. So this year, going to be one, one bag per, per family. And I guess we're gonna give out tickets to try to accommodate many kids as we possibly can.
Okay, tickets to what?
Tickets to, if you come in, you register, we give you a ticket. You call your tickets, you get a bag.
Okay. So if you got a family of three.
We can
Will they give one?
That's it.
Okay. Okay. I was just trying to, I was just curious how it works. Because there's a lot of kids, and I'm like, you can't possibly have that many gifts.
You're right. I think we did about 150 last year.
Okay.
And the goal is to try to do at least 200 this year or more. That's the goal this year.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions?
That's it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. You'll please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember McCair.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Frankie, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hope to see you next meeting.
When is the next meeting?
You know, the second Monday, which is
November 22nd.
November 22nd?
November 22nd. No, I don't think we're having that yet.
Probably won't have a meeting before Thanksgiving, probably the first one in December.
December 13th.
December the 13th.
December 13th?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Kind of close, if I'd be here.
Mayor, may I?
Yes.
We need a, we do need a meeting in November to pass the revised budget.
Okay. All right. Yeah, we might as well. So you're looking at November the 22nd. So will everyone be here on November the 22nd? Got one head nod.
I will.
Yes.
Two, three. All right. So we will have another meeting on November the 22nd? Okay, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to go ahead and approve a next city council meeting on the November 22nd, 6 p.m., 2021.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. There's no further questions. We'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember McCair.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Point of clarification is the CRA meeting that was normally scheduled that day as we cast, still, right?
Yes. Okay, back to the audit. We'd like to invite Ms. Julie Fowler, her associate, up to give our audit for this year. For last year, rather. Let's see how many last
Good evening. I am Julie Fowler with Clifton, Larson, Allen. Sarah Simmons and I are here tonight to review the results of your audits that are in the September 30th, 2020. So this goes back a little ways. We're gonna hit the highlights at a very high level. But if you have questions as we go, please feel free to stop us, and we can answer those to the best our ability tonight, or get back to you with answers. So Sarah is going to start out with some financial highlights.
Okay.
Next slide. One more. Thank you. So we'll start with the general funds, and overall, fund balance increased 226,000. And that primarily relates to the increase in the fire assessment in 2020. And the ending fund balance came out at 5.7 million, with 4.9 million of that in unassigned fund balance. And that unassigned fund balance would represent approximately 95% of the 2020 expenditures. So that's a pretty good position to be in. Then for the infrastructure fund, fund balance increased a million dollars. And there was a stable tax revenue base and few expenditures in the, in the fiscal year. And ending fund balance ended at 5.3 million, which is, of course, restricted for infrastructure purposes. And then for the CRA fund, revenue over expenditures was $210,000. There was $497,000 of transfers related to the brick building transferring over to the general fund. And that led to an overall increase in fund balance of $707,000 with CRA. For the water and sewer fund, there was operating income of $985,000. $2.4 million of capital grants and contributions for the fund, and then a net position increase of $2.8 million. There's 16 million of that is net investment in capital assets, and 10.5 million would be unrestricted for use. In the airport fund, there was an operating loss of 478,000, pretty similar to the prior year. $1.5 million of rent revenues for the airport. There were several, several projects going on, and an overall net position increase of 1 million.
Can you please explain exactly why we have a loss at the airport?
There has been an operating loss at the airport for many years.
That just from rent, revenue and so forth?
Yeah.
You don't have enough revenue to cover our expenses?
Yes.
So I wanted to make sure.
Yes. And then for the solid waste fund, same as well, $221,000 loss. And there was a similar loss in 2019, the year before, as well. And that position decreased 214,000. And in that fund, there's about 840,000 of net investment in capital assets, and 1.2 million in unrestricted. So do you have any other questions on the numbers before we dive into our audit reports, the most exciting part of the evening?
Anyone? Please continue.
So our audit is broken down into three big categories. The first is the audit of the financial statements or the numbers. The second is grant-specific audits. And then finally, we have some state compliance procedures that were required to perform. On the next slide, you'll see the summary of the results of those procedures that we performed. So first of all, our So first of all, our independent auditors report, we've expressed an unmodified opinion, that means we believe that your financial statements are presented in conformity with accounting principles that are generally accepted for governments. So you would think of that as a clean opinion on your financial statements. We also require to issue a report on internal control over your financial reporting, compliance and other matters. We did have one finding related to the timeliness of your financial statement reporting. Your audit was due to this date on June thirtieth, and of course, that was late again this year, it's been late for a few years. Our recommendation is that you continue to evaluate your internal and external resources that are devoted to clo- closing out the year, preparing for the audit, so the audit can be performed more timely. We've already taken some steps by bringing on some staff who have experience with municipal accounting, so you're headed in the right direction, we believe. Um, to get that finally cleared up for next year.
Was there a cause for us to be in late?
This will be, um, well, potentially, I should say.
Okay.
Um, the state could potentially withhold state revenue sharing. In my practice, I've never seen that happen. Um, but that is one thing that could potentially happen. Report findings are also tracked by the auditor general. Um, if you have a finding repeat three years in a row, the council, or the mayor will receive a letter from the joint legislative auditing committee asking what your remediation is going to be to take care of that finding.
So I'm sure your conversation with staff now will make sure this won't happen next year, correct? That's what you.
That's our hope.
Well, I hope too. I think it will be so. Thank you, Mel.
The next rounds of reports are related to the grants. And we have procedures we have to perform for federal grants and then separately for state grants, so first, let's talk about the federal grants. The airport improvement program was what we call the major federal program. That's based off of a risk assessment, which includes the dollars that were spent on that program. And it's by far the largest federal program that you operate. We do believe that you have complied in all material respects with the requirements of that grant program. We did identify three material weaknesses in the internal control over grants that we believe should be looked at to make sure that you stay in compliance with that grant program. And those are specifically over reporting, matching and special tested provisions. So for those of you who aren't that familiar with grants, um, there are various compliance requirements that you have to follow. And you want to make sure that you have internal controls in place to ensure that you stay in compliance, that you're not just in compliance by accident, basically. So we're recommending that you put some additional procedures in place, make sure you have someone overseeing these grants who's familiar with grant compliance in general, but also this, these specific programs. Then on the state side, there were two grants that worked together for the water expansion project. And these two, um, like I said, they work closely together, so we tested it basically as one big grant. We believe that the city did not comply with a few of the requirements of those grant programs. Um, specifically, there was one expense charged to the grant, which was not within the scope of work. Um, there were also reports that weren't filed, that were required to be filed, and reimbursement request was not filed, that was required to be filed based off of the scope of work. So along with those, we recommend that you put these same internal controls in place, I would talk about on federal side, put those same things in place on the state side. So that you can get back into compliance, make sure this doesn't recur in the future.
Can you explain to me what that question will cost over when this goes?
The question cost would be one expense, it was for a land purchase. And land was not one of the specific expenditures that was allowed based off of the scope of work with D E O.
Thank you.
We issue a management letter, which is required by the rules of the auditor general. We didn't have any additional recommendations or findings in that letter. And then we issued a report on your compliance with investment of public funds, we do believe you are in compliance with those statutes. And then something that was new this year that I felt mentioned earlier, um, the state now is requ- now is requiring CRAs to have their own set of audited financial statements, so that has been prepared this year. We also have some additional compliance procedures that we have to perform specific to the CRAs. And it's quite a lengthy list of compliance that we looked at, and the only item that we noted, um, where the city did not follow was the adopted budget of the CRA is required to be submitted to the Board of County Commissioners within ten days of it being adopted, and that did not happen for the government audit, so that's something that will be very easy to fix going forward.
Are the expenses within the CRA on itself were?
Yes, they were appropriate. And then finally, we issue a separate letter to you as the group charge of governance, um, that letter does include all of the items that are listed on this slide that we need to report to you under government audit standards. That confused our report, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Do you have any questions for Julie?
Nope.
Good job. Nina, Julie, we thank you very much as well.
Thank you.
You go.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
All right, I have number nine, let's be the museums use of the first floor room at the community center, request the wave fees for events at community center. Nancy Fisk.
My name is Nancy Fisk, and I'm representing the Historical Society Baymont Park. Um, we have a, the um, depot museum that we manage with volunteers, and one room there, which used to be a baggage room when it was a train depot, is used for storage currently. If we could take half of the things that are in there and store them elsewhere, we would have more room for exhibit space, which is what we'd like to do. The community center is convenient, it's right across the street from us, and most of the items that would be, well, everything that would be put there are things that we don't need every day, once they're in place, we probably wouldn't look at them maybe once a year. Um, if anyone needed the old newspapers for uh, reference, they would have to make an appointment. And so there isn't anything that we would be storing there that we would need on the spur of the moment, and so, um, as long as, once the things are in place, we would be able to arrange with a city worker to open it for us if we ever had to access anything. But it would just be safekeeping for things that we have in the museum now.
Steph, we have uh, any issue with this arrangement?
No, actually, David Roberts went out, met with Nancy, and then I went over with David Roberts, and Nancy brought the last time, might need its own A C unit, but actually, this office has its own. And so we can just set it on whatever they need and leave it, and it'll turn off and on, but our recommendation, we're going to put a new lock on there, because the one on there is improper, it won't lock. But other than that, we recommend that it's not being used, and renewed for years, I think it would be good use.
Thank you.
We have any motion?
I make a motion, we approve item number V nine, for the Historical Society to use the first floor vacant office.
There a second? We have a motion in a second, is there questions on this?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
The stuff that you're moving across the street is, what what kind of stuff is it?
Mostly bound copies of old newspapers. Uh, there are some of the newspapers that we have that have been digitized, and we're going to send some of those to the Sebring Archives because we don't need them anymore, people can app- can access them on the computer. Um, and it's some other, well, documents that are in boxes and some, um, like military uniforms, things like that, that would be packed in bins that we might use for exhibits at some point, but they're things we don't want to discard, but we're just not exhibiting them right now.
I have one other question.
Go ahead.
With with the use of that, that have a building, building, should there be any kind of like release of liability or anything like that? Since it's supposed to be valuable, historical.
Jerry?
If something flood or fire or anything like that.
There's probably good idea that, um, this liability, or anything that happened in cases of in the event that might be considered to be negligent. And they break down the air machine or whatever it might be.
Would you be opposed to basically releasing those supplyabilities, your building fail and destroy your documents?
They're your documents.
All right.
Too, I mean, um, they belong to the, um, most of the things we belong to the city, so no, we would have no problem with that.
So would this be temporary or this be permanent?
It would be, um, temporarily permanent is all I can say. So mostly it's ongoing.
Yeah.
Yes, because we're not planning on enlarging the museum, we just want to create more space within the space we have.
Yeah, unless there was some type of a a grant that came along, or just a wealthy donor that donated money, they're more likely not going to be an expansion to the museum, like you say.
If we were to get a grant, we'd take over the brick building, get the whole thing.
I see.
But that's not a possibility right now.
Okay.
Um, and we're not working on it either, I'm not making a promise. Um, my other request has to do with, uh, programming that we would like to provide for the community.
We can write now. So is this all for the storage?
No, 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 oh, I'm sorry, you have to go on that first.
Yeah, so we have a motion in second on the floor, so if no further questions, we'll go ahead and call a roll on that.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeer?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Our second request has to do with the use of the use of the community center again. Um, we would like to have some, um, outreach programming into the community. What I'm finding is that, uh, we do have, um, our exhibits in the museum are being mostly viewed by out of town guests. Our community members are not really coming into the museum, we don't expect people to come in every week to find out what's going on there. But the museum is mostly used by out of town folks, um, people who used to live here, coming back to reminisce, whatever. So we feel that in order to fulfill our mission to really promote history in the community and foster an appreciation for history, we should have some outreach programming. To that end, we are sponsoring a series of talks that would, um, have to do with a broad range of subjects that we think will interest a broad range of our community. Um, one would be during Black History Month, one would be during Women's History Month, and the third one is in April, which is just April. But we would like to use the community center, and we would like to ask that the fee be waived. Our speakers are coming from the Florida Humanities Speakers Directory, and so we have to pay them, uh, speaker's fee, we have to pay their, uh, travel costs. And there will be some costs involved in promoting this, and we would like to be able to offer these talks to the community, uh, free of charge. We are partnering with the Highlands County N double A C P to do this, so we hope to reach, um, a broad audience. So if if you would waive the fees, we would truly appreciate it, it would help us.
This for the, uh, first floor?
The first one?
Is this for the first floor or for the?
Oh, no, just for the first floor, yes.
Yeah.
Be- because we can set the chairs up in clusters, so we can be aware of COVID, hopefully, we not, then have to worry about that next year, but we may. Um, but the community center, since the talks are for the community, the community center is an ideal place to do it.
So how often are the, uh, the talks? Is this a very?
It would be, um, three, Sunday afternoons, one in February, one in March, and one in April. I've already checked, the dates are available, we paid the two hundred dollar deposit um, that we have to pay in order to confirm the the date for the first one. And if it's approved, we would just leave the deposit in place until the final, um, talk in April.
True. All right, uh, does council have any questions or anything further?
I don't have any issue with that.
Application process for these communities or not?
I think they have.
I think what, this is the application, all that. Sure.
Yeah. I think you might have to do an application for each of that.
I did, I have.
I mean, I think you have to come forward, right?
Uh, no, I don't.
No, okay.
Okay. It shouldn't be necessary for everyone, okay? I'm fine, then, I'm I'm good with it.
So she's already reserved it for those dates?
Correct.
Yeah, so it's already been reserved, and she's already paid the fee to reserve it, so I, I'm sure that can serve as a
Okay.
Request.
I'm good with that.
Any further questions?
Nope.
There a motion?
I make a motion.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'll make a motion to proof V nine.
There a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second, any further questions? Nina will call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeer?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much, Nancy.
Thank you, we'll give you an invitation to the talks, we want to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have number ten, Miss Galen Thompson, Department Cultural Alliance. She's requesting for wave fees for a road closure and community center event. Galen, welcome, what do you have going on?
As the information in the package shows, we have a art and culture fusion fest that we're trying to promote unity in the community with.
Hmm.
Uh, the only change in the event summary is the food court of cultures would not be on the lawn beside the train car, but would be on Museum Ave itself. This is a result of, um, a meeting this last week, um, which brought in Rob Bullock and Shane and Sherry Eason as partners in this. So, uh, with their experience and resources, they they, um, give me the confidence that this will be a successful event. I have one other thing, if you have questions about it, we have a pre-registration form that we created and went to the Sebring Art Festival and talked to all the vendors there, gave them a a pre-registration form. Five of them actually went ahead and filled it out, so it seems like, um, vendors are very hungry to be, um, out and about again this year. So, uh, if you want a copy of that, I'll be glad to give it to you, but that's kind of it. Um, if any questions?
Any questions for Galen?
We do need to use the community center bathroom for that event?
Yes, it's, um, we don't publicize that it's open, but we did not have to use portable bathrooms the last time, we just used the the bathrooms there, and I don't believe there was a problem.
Great, so the, uh, time is on Saturday from eight A M. to four P M. So is there going to be staff available to deal with close Museum Avenue and everything?
Overtime, Steph.
Okay, but keep in mind that the staff will be paid overtime to come in, uh, do the road closure, so is there any questions for council on that?
I have a question on the fees.
Go ahead.
Um, what fund does the fees follow, um, for this, to center, the community center, what fund is this, those fees from?
We want a general fund, don't we? Yeah.
General fund. And are we getting, do we usually get a lot of, um, waiver of the fees around the holidays, or or is this something that usually go?
So the only organizations that we ever wave the fees for would be for a nonprofit. Um, I would say nonprofit traffic tends to go up and down over the years, some years we get more than others, generally, we have far more availability of building that is used um, for the regular rentals, which actually gives the city revenue, typically, it's for like, uh, you know, an after wedding party or something like that. Uh, those are usually on the weekends, um, but again, I think we have probably, what, a thirty percent rental rate, if that?
Yeah, it's quite rare.
And has, has anyone looked, like, within a year? Um, did a survey of the amount of money we we lose waiving fees from January to December, has anyone ever looked into that?
I know that we do get in our, uh, budget every year how much revenue comes from it, I'm not sure that it's quantified how many waivers we do.
No, I've not tracked that, but we can, we can certainly do that if you request.
Yeah, we can look back at the, how many organizations rented it, and how many will waive, so we can get that.
Can I add to that, man?
Yes.
And yeah, that's one way to look at it, another one is she's bringing the community to get together for events, to bring in to downtown Avon Park, where the other ones are birthday parties, or after weddings, like you said, and that. So this is more includes our citizens and bring people into Avon Park, hopefully, spend some money and nothing else, inclusion for everybody, so.
Yeah, it's on the same lines as, uh, as your request, you know, all of this, we're basically utilizing tax dollars to bring more people downtown to benefit to the citizens. Yeah, the whole community center as a whole is just that, it's a community center, so we're spending tax dollars every year to keep this building up, so the community can use it, and this is just one way to.
Right, that's what I have a problem.
Right. That's what I have a problem with it. It's just that I wanted to know if anybody was paying attention to the amount that we was losing. Like, like Mark said, she's bringing people to the community and community out having a good time. I was just curious about how much.
How about giving a quick update on the last one you had with the kids for Halloween?
We sponsored a Halloween activity. We had requests for a parade like the old days, you know. So we thought Museum Ave would be a safe place to do it. We partnered with the Public Library, with the Historical Society and Heartland Cultural Alliance. We advertised outside of the schools. You can't advertise in the school without months of preparation, found that out. But we had our article in the paper, we had it all over Facebook. But inside of that, we did have a very enthusiastic and appreciative group who came. It was a small group. It was a little over twenty fifty and sixty who showed up. But those who came supported the idea and would like for us to do it again next year, maybe even add more Halloween activities. What I found out was that different groups, different communities had their own events. And so they didn't feel the need to come downtown. And that's what we want to change. We want people that live in our area to feel like the downtown is important. And so the more we can do downtown and bring the, all of the groups that make up Avon Park into it, that'll be good. I know we intend to approach the churches for, we want to have dancing and music and food. And so we want to approach the churches and say, you know, how would you like to participate? If you just want information, there's barely any charge at all. If you want to sell food, you know, it costs more.
Yeah. Does the First Baptist do anything for Halloween?
Not that I know of.
I know they have that, the old armory building there. I know they use that for dances and things. So if it was at the park, you know, you're not only not having to close the road, but you also have a huge park that you can use. It's lit. And you have potentially, if they're on board, like you said, a dance hall right across the street there.
But we're, we're, we're not parade. We have to close Main Street. So, you know, I, I agree. And maybe next year they'll put it on Main Street, you know, if Shane.
Throw out ideas for it.
Take it over. Thank you.
I think it's a great idea because I know since COVID, some of the other community locations that used to have Halloween events obviously was set down last year. I don't know if some of them came back this year to some of the churches. So anything that you could do to make the community down to a certain location, I think it would be great. And I think it might do a lot bigger, better job next year with more people show up. I appreciate the all the comments of the last special.
I'm sure if you can get something that happens every year, no matter where it is, it's going to grow.
I have a question. Is this the first time you've done this event?
Fusion Fest? Yes. But this is actually our third year doing a festival on Museum Ave. Each year it has slightly evolved. And this year we use the word fusion fest because our goal is bringing the community together. That's, that's our goal. And so we're trying to reach as many different sources of dance and music and food as we can. I originally thought the restaurants would be our source of food, the different cultural restaurants that we have. But I wasn't thinking about how hard it's going to be for them to have staff, you know, because that's a big issue. So we decided to have more of the food truck rallying. There's a lot of diversity in the food trucks. So we would limit, you know, how many pizzas and hamburgers that there would be, you know, so that we would have a diverse group.
Yep.
So I don't, I don't know if this is the thing. I'm just going to throw this out there and see if it directs me. But would she be able to give the city flyers and order to put in the water bills to go out to let people know that, hey, we've got this going on. It's this time? I mean, because it wouldn't be sponsored, we won't, we wouldn't be paying for the paper to tell them the labor. She could ground, she could bring it down, we could distribute the water bills.
Well, here's the thing. I can't do the music offhand, but which is from a utility standpoint, which I have some experience in. People tend, if you start loading things into the bills, they'll know what happens is they just start throwing that stuff away. And you need to send a very important message, very odd. You better send that separate. I think your bills go out like hard anyway, don't they?
No, they will. They go off by paper, but there's a company that we actually send the bills to and they print them and mail them for us.
So I'll leave that, I'll leave that to you. Something to tell you from the perspective, totally from the perspective of, if you put stuff in there, okay. They don't care about eventually just throw all that stuff away.
However, we could have an events page on our website.
Ooh, I like that.
Every time that we approve these events that we do fairly regularly, they just automatically want to look there.
Sounds like a good idea.
Right, Kristen? All right.
And our new website is up for running, so.
Awesome.
Yeah, that looks great, too.
Watch out, Google, here we come. So we have a, has there been a motion?
No.
No, but I have one more question.
Go ahead.
Sorry. The overtime they would take to shut the roads off, do you ever flex those people off for the time that they just spent in overtime?
If they want, it's open under the union contract to get overtime or comp done.
Then I'll make a motion to approve B ten.
There a second? We have a motion and a second, seconded by Bernice. Okay, Bernice seconded. All right, we have a motion and a second. If there's no further questions, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McHirry?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mary Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Galen, thank you very much.
Thank you, Galen.
I have number eleven. We have a jingle bell, jingle bell run. Mr. Jarrett. He said he would love to get up here and talk to us.
Yes.
Something that happens every year. It's a very big event for Avon Park.
Uh, thank you. Bill Jarrett. What is his address? Sixteen twenty-nine Ballpark, Avon Park. I believe this might be our tenth at our seventh one. Just like that it's been proceeds that have been raised and this one will be on December tenth, that they're going to the school system. For the previous ones this year, after a two-year hiatus or a one-year hiatus and two years. In light of what we've all just went through in the last twenty-two months, we're taking this, the funds to the medical system for healthcare needs or everything that everybody's gone through and well, it's being ran, the registrations anyway, through the Avon uh, through the Advent Health Foundation. Our family has just been tasked with paying for it. From various bills that come in, whether it's for the cones that need to be set up for the overtime labor and the sheriff's department who have been very helpful in securing the safety of it. Traditionally, we have grown into about four hundred and fifty participants. This year, there's a novelty to it that the two days afterwards, the Spartan races are in town. You all entertained an idea back a month ago. I'm told those twelve thousand individuals are still coming, and they want something to do the night before the race. So we're going to have to figure out how to limit what grows beyond our control. If in fact it does, this will be a first, this will be an experiment. So whether we cap it at a thousand people or it doesn't grow past five hundred. We want to grow this thing managedly, so it doesn't harm anybody. The Union Congregational Church is the starting point, and they, they give us the property and the areas inside for restroom facilities. The closure of the road and the cones is, I believe, and the permission, why I stand.
We have a motion?
I make a motion to go ahead and approve item number bill, B eleven, the Jingle Bell Run Event, the closure of the road.
There a second? We have a motion and second. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McHirry?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mary Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Mr. Jarrett, thank you very much. I have number twelve. We have the LCF Foundation five K race with road closure. Cash Jackson.
I'm on the TV, the Zoom. Um, thank you guys for taking the time to allow us to present this to you. This is our second year of the LC five Foundation five K. Just a little recap on the LC five Foundation. It was started last year in twenty twenty in memory of one of our esteemed friends that unfortunately passed away in the Avon Park community. Our goal was to keep his legacy alive by helping those of the youth in the community to inspire and guide and empower those people. We were able to raise money last year that went to three different organizations. We helped some others in the community, but we also made a large, a large contribution to a Jade's Journey, which is a fund set up to help Jade Jackson and her, her journey with childhood brain cancer. We're also able to award four scholarships to graduating seniors in Avon Park High School to help mitigate the cost of a higher education. With that being said, last year was our first year of the five K. We had around a hundred people. We're looking to continue that race, January fifteenth of twenty-two, from nine AM to twelve PM. We're going to use the same route as the Jingle Bell Run, starting at Union Congregational Church, going from there, down Main Street, around Lake Avenue, and ending back at the Union Congregational Church. So much like Mr. Jarrett's Jingle Bell Run, our run is under the Heartland Run Series through the Advent Health Foundation. I think we're actually the first one, and Mr. Jarrett wraps up the Heartland Run Foundation, or the Heartland Run Series. So we're looking to get the event approved and anything else we can do, so.
Mr. Cash, is the Advent Health System a nonprofit?
Uh, yes, sir. The foundation is, which supports the Heartland Run Series.
Got it.
Yeah. But the LC five foundation's a nonprofit also.
Awesome. Do we have any further questions for Mr. Jackson?
One question I have is where is the tent and the music going to be? Is that by the church?
Yes, sir. That's just for the, the electrical equipment that's used for the start-finish line, the, you know, the kind of thing you run under. So that'll be all right there at Union Congregation off the side of the road. It's just a ten by ten little tailgate tent just to make sure that if it does rain, the system doesn't get fried.
Okay. Any further questions?
No, I think this is great.
Seeing none, is there a motion?
I make a motion to go ahead and approve item number B twelve for the LC five foundations for street closure for their five K.
There a second?
I second it.
We have a motion and second. Call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McHirry?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mary Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I have number thirteen. This will be a CDBG application appeal letter. Christine Alde, is she with us?
It's going to be Antonio Jenkins.
All right, Antonio, are you with us? Mr. Jenkins. He is not with us. We'll skip it for now. We'll come back to it if anyone sees him pop up.
I don't see Arnold Wilson here. He's the one that's put it in.
Yeah.
Page you, Mr. Wilson. Like I said, we'll skip it if either one of those two individuals comes along, let me know. I have number fourteen. This will be for the consent agenda. This will be the minutes from October eleventh, twenty twenty-one, city council regular meeting. Looking for a motion.
Make a motion to approve item number C fourteen, the minutes from October eleventh, twenty twenty-one.
There a second? Motion and second. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McHirry?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mary Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I have number fifteen. This will be for the purchase of new VTE vehicles. Meli?
You have before you this evening, eight vehicles that were approved during the budget process for a total of two hundred ninety-six thousand twenty dollars. With the new bids that came in, the total cost is three hundred thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars. It will be four thousand five hundred and seventy-five over budget. However, we can take that from salaries of the taken positions.
We have questions on these vehicles?
Just have one question. Maybe Rick can answer concerning the difference between getting a two-wheel drive to four Rangers as compared to F one fifty-two-wheel drive. Is there a difference in the cost or what is the difference in the need?
Well, they're smaller and low cost and more fuel efficient. So you have the, the Rangers for the operators in the F one fifty for the operators, they all don't need large trucks when they're out checking wells and pulling samples off-road and stuff like that. So I don't really need a full drive. As far as a larger truck, they all don't need large trucks. We just got one truck basically, if they need to pull long hours to the plants and mow weeds and stuff like that.
Thing I want to know, which I think makes sense, is the difference in cost for the two-wheel drive four Ranger compared to the two-wheel drive Ford one fifty. Is there more seating in the Ranger and that's why we're getting those additional costs? It shows here that the four Rangers are like twenty-two thousand, one hundred, the F fifty is twenty-seven. So.
Why? Rangers are what?
Says twenty-two thousand ninety-nine and the F one fifty is twenty-seven five. So we're all, both are two-wheel drive, so. And you get an additional four Ranger or do you need the Ford one fifty-two-wheel drive?
That's for parks. That's, that's, that's for parks. Yeah, that was a rollover last year, I believe.
That, that was a rollover from last year for the new park position you gave us. We didn't fill it, so we didn't buy one. And that, they need that size vehicle so that they can pull the trailer behind them with the mower and all their equipment. And that answered more to what Rick said. The two-wheel drive Rangers, they don't need four-wheel drive. Those are meter reader.
Okay.
This is based on a center or is this a feedback on that? This, this is the source well, the, the national contract thing that. We actually reached, I had Andy also reach out with Florida Sheriff's Association. Sometimes a little cheaper, they can't get any vehicles. The reason, I wasn't going to put this on tonight's agenda, but if we don't have this in by the sixteenth, they can't guarantee us when they can put us in for vehicles. They're so far behind, you know.
Okay, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve item number C fifteen for approval purchase of eight U-C vehicles for a total cost of three hundred thousand five ninety-five.
You have a second? I'll second.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Round number fifteen. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McHirry?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mary Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Mary, can I say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
I know these vehicles are no more use to the city. We'll be taking them to auction, so we'll make some money from the auction.
Very good. National Blue Discharge Elimination System, NPDES Phase Two, this will be the annual status report. Cycle two, year one. Mr. Craig Fuller with P E Civil Service Design Group. Welcome.
Thank you. Is there a clicker or do I, do you want me to just motion?
Just motion.
Okay. Yell at him, throw something at him, whatever you can.
Good evening, Craig Fuller, twenty-five twenty-five grand to run Lakeview, Florida, and the youth, mayor and council and staff. So this is a program that you've actually had for quite a while, and I put this together for the previous group, but then we realized elections were happening, so it kept delayed until it was the new council in. Because it is a gigantic program, and I don't want to undersell this. It's a lot of work, both on your end and a small amount online. But what we're trying to do is kind of go through the standard requirements. But when I say standard, it's actually been specifically doctored and shaped for this community. So it, what is the NPDES? It's the National Blue Discharge Elimination System. But it was created back in the seventies originally with the Clean Water Act, and then modified again in nineteen eighty-seven with the Water Quality Act. So the intent is to address, just to boil this down, runoff that is untreated and goes into lakes and rivers and other. runoff that is untreated and goes into lakes and rivers and other water, uh, water bodies. So typically, what you're thinking of then, for your system, they call it an MS for municipal separate storm sewer system. Excellent. It's a, and it's a, a system that's basically regulated federally, and it's administered through the state, so it's, it's actually the DEP up in Tallahassee says this, it's not a local DEP group. And so they go throughout the state, and if you go to the next one, it, it's authorized under various statutes provisions. If, the ones most familiar to me are the 600 series, that's where it's called clean water, but actually that's, uh, basically the, the regulations and all the dirty water, uh, and the runoff. And some of the other ones are a little older in the federal statutes, where it is where it came from. Next slide. And the purpose is, again, to address the urban stormwater runoff as a pollutant. And because, uh, your area in particular has some of the highest quality lakes in the area, and because you hit a specific, um, population, which we'll look at in a minute, that's why it exists here, so, but again, this is just to define it, it's your municipal separate storm sewer system. So what this includes is all roads that aren't GOT or county road, or a separately designed, uh, subdivision, you know, which you'd normally think of as, it, it would be, it might be a newer, uh, commercial, or it might be a newer, uh, family subdivision, single-family, multi-family, whatever it is. Those have their own permits, however, mu- many, 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 many things, obviously all of downtown, predates, uh, the seventies when any of this existed. So what happens is all the runoff of, uh, people coming through, we're, we're trying to address that and prevent it from destroying your lakes. It, because eventually is, uh, the, uh, there is the thought that some of it could, and we know that effect is happening on Lake Jackson, which is why there's some action items that are happening. So I'll go through that in a minute, but the reason it, it exists here is because your population hit a, a, uh, a specific level of about 60,000, and it also hit, uh, specific densities. Next slide. So luckily it didn't hit the 100,000 threshold, that's a phase one. So I know a phase two, it sounds like it's further down, like it's, you know, might be worse, but a phase one, it was the original ones that were created in the early nineties, and they were, uh, they're, they're, they're up to the level now where you have to do a sampling protocol at various points where they believe where it might be coming from, you have to chase it upstream, you have to build a lot of infra-infra-structure. Yours is actually pretty mi- uh, mild, there are some things you have to do, but, and I'll, I'll go through that. And the phase two, that was implemented only about 20 years ago, and it was from those earlier ones that were exempt, and once they triggered a, uh, an urbanized area. Next slide. This is just a, a small spattering of some of them around the state, the, almost all of these are phase twos. Uh, this is just alphabetical, to be honest, there is a ton of them. So it's not like you're the only one, and, and in fact, one of the smaller groups that got hit with this was Okeechobee County, you know, having your, I believe, TPO area, so it's, uh, similar, uh, timeframe, similar issues. You guys are in the same, what's it called, B map? And this, these are funny, all these acronyms that all go together. Basically, all your outflow eventually goes into Lake O. So if you don't stop it up here, kind of at the source, it gets worse and worse and worse downstream, and they're right there, obviously, all of their outflow, most of yours does, but all of theirs does. Next slide. So in 2010, you hit that 60,000, and the density was such that it triggered it. And it, this includes a significant amount of unincorporated areas, and if you go to the next slide, it just kind of shows the, uh, that little green area is, which is, it includes, uh, all of Avon Park, all of, uh, Sebring, but the, it's, it's actually unincorporated, uh, Highlands County, so they work with you on this. You're, you're not alone, and, uh, they do, in fact, a, a lot of the work. Uh, next slide. And having achieved the compliance or keep, it, keep this permit in compliance. So some items we did, and, you know, just point, uh, to Jerry, Jerry and I had to work up a, a, a big ordinance that was specifically regulated to all of this runoff, and how it would be, uh, basically, uh, kept in, uh, if, if it went out of compliance, what would the action items be? And we tagged it to, uh, the, the code group, so that if there was an issue, they could go out there and enforce it. So you want to monitor, you want to modify one, but not the other, because this is specifically just related to this, and then we tag it to what they can do in the code compliance section, so. Um, and the good news is, there's, once this is created, there's what's called, uh, notice of intent. And I'm trying to blow through all of these as, as fast as possible, just to give you kind of the history. But the notice of intent is how you build your permit. So there's a, there's basically a, a set thing it has to do, and that's kind of the boilerplate. So it's a, there's a goal, and each, uh, each community is different on how they fulfill that goal. So yours is 95% similar to Highlands County and 95% similar to Sebring, but you're both a little different, but I can tell you, you know, 70% similar to a Indian Rock Beach or, uh, Okeechobee County, just because they're different, you're different communities, you have different, you know, you have more lakes, different resources, different things, so. Uh, the, the interesting thing is you have a lot more lakes and a lot more, you know, potentials for impact, but you've done a lot of programs, like, and Lake Verona is one of them, just to, you know, it's a, it's a great project that really did a lot to improve or prevent, uh, that lake from, uh, being affected. So right now, we've already gone through five years, we're actually in the second cycle, they call it. And each of the first five years, we had to do, uh, with what's called an annual report, and although there's, I'll call it five, but there's really six items, six item, doesn't matter in some other state. But while there are five items, next slide please. Um, you report on those each year, but in the second one, you don't necessarily. So what I'm trying to go through here is what, uh, you know, say staff time from, uh, Rick and, and David Roberts team, and, uh, what each entity is kind of required to do. And, uh, year one, you're, you're theoretically not required to do a report, but I want to tell you they are going to require it. And the reason being is, a few years ago, they did an audit, and it was just, it was a time when, uh, there was a lot of transition. And because of that, some, there wasn't necessarily the handoff, and some of those things weren't done. And so, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll say Rick's team and the group that was working with them, and it was Robert, David, uh, Rick, and, you know, that, that whole team really got us back into compliance, and that was great, but, but I know this time they're still probably going to require this report, and it's all going. They're pretty straightforward, but it does take time, and it takes some public notification. I'll, I'll tell you that there's one of them that's kind of awkward, that they make us, uh, now kind of go out to businesses and check their stormwater to make sure that they're not dumping, but we did get that tongue down, and I'll, uh, as we go through each of these elements, I'll, I'll go through that, next slide. So again, as I said, there's five, you'll see there's six, right? But the one is, it's really done by the state, and that's why it says it's optional. So it's really one through four and six. State, I recommend you don't invent your own, it's a very complicated process, and it has to be equal to or more stringent than, uh, theirs, and, you know, there are some counties that have their own, um, but they're, they have a gigantic staff to do that, you know, like Hillsborough County or, uh, i- is one of my can think of, it's a little different. Uh, next slide. So element one, uh, the first one is public education and outreach, and this is done largely with your, uh, your partner, uh, Highlands County. They're, they distribute and provide a lot of flyers, and it's at public locations such as like, uh, uh, I know they, they had them across the street there at City Hall, in case anybody came in. They, they had them at Public Works, um, there was also at the county and city events, and that, that includes, that's what's nice about this, it's a three-way deal, so if there's the Soda Fest at, uh, Sebring, that can count as yours, you guys are all the same watershed, so let's share resources, and that's, that's the whole idea here. Um, and then the, the one thing is, they do want you to kind of post information on the website, and that could be kind of a canned, uh, did you know sort of, you know, and you can, you, they just want it on the main, um, uh, Facebook page, so, and, and website, uh, so that there is some public outreach, it's not just, you know, amongst, uh, your group and staff. And then the, at each of these events and each of these, uh, locations where they're distributed, they want you to kind of tally and figure out how many pamphlets were taken during that period. The next slide. Uh, and then the other item, and this was, was really nice, we, uh, we were able to work with the DOT to get, uh, trying to remember the number, seems it was, uh, it was quite a few hundred of these, uh, storm grade markers. And the purpose of this is to, uh, when you see it, you realize, you know, it doesn't go to some pond. No, it, it goes straight to the lake, which, you know, we all enjoy, we all, I mean, specifically, that's, that's why, you know, moved back to this area from, you know, where I was, was so that I could be near the lakes, and it, it's just a very nice area, it's fishing. Um, you know, you take your kids out there, and it, whether you're swimming or, boom, it's a really nice area, and by cleaning it or keeping it clean, it just, uh, increases the values, and then so then there's that benefit to the city as well. Um, and then, so the DOT, all we have to do is take pictures of these, have evidence that where they were put, total up, and then they'll give us more, next slide. Um, there's the other public involvement, all involvement and participation, this one's the, this is kind of a new one. Um, and they want, uh, there's this, this item in particular, which is provide a status report to council each year. However it's done, you can actually just throw it on a consent agenda, uh, but specifically, I know, uh, staff really, you know, kind of wanted, uh, the details of this, because it's, it is so good, it's a lot of effort, and, uh, you know, I know Jerry's been involved in the water industry for years, he, yeah, I'm sure he was not terribly excited for this hit, but, you know, that, because it is, it's, it's great for the water quality, but it's also, it's, it's a lot of work. So one of the, uh, specific items was, this year we were supposed to build a, uh, coalition. We met with a lot of your staff, met with Sebring, met with, uh, Highlands County with. It was, that's, that was one reason I was trying to beat the day, you noticed it was last Saturday. There was an event that was in your, um, area that was a, a cleanup of, um, Lake Jackson, and every meeting at Evans Park, and, you know, just kind of going out from there, and, and again, that's a, that's uh, an impaired water body that they determined. So again, that's not the only item though, and, and that's not the only organization. That specifically was, uh, the Rotary in Sebring, and then we've also had some discussions with, uh, the C to Sebring in particular, I know, kind of met with, there was a, a community, uh, I believe Washington Heights, and they were meeting with them and talking about like a cleanup event in that location. Um, any of these are in your, uh, your area, so as long as it's not for, I, like, I'll call it gated neighborhood, usually that's, that's a good sign that it probably has its own pond, but any of the, uh, older established neighborhoods that don't have a pond, any, any of these contribute to the same, um, watershed. So that's the point, is it can be, uh, like Verona or Lake Isis, or, you know, any of them, there's, 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 you have a, a bunch of them, I, I've got a list of, on your, I was surprised that, you know, when I looked for all the outfalls, there was just so many, that, uh, there's, that's a good and there's a bad thing, right? Because then you, you have, you have a lot more to that, but there's a lot to, uh, a lot to enjoy here, so next one. And then, uh, going to element three, this, luckily this doesn't happen a lot, but this is specifically, uh, what we're looking for in, in some of the, uh, businesses, but, uh, we're looking for illicit discharge detection elimination. Uh, what we do is we look at all of the outfalls that exist. We update them as new ones are located by staff, you know, be it Rick or, or David, they find one, we will drop it in that map. Uh, and then we also, once a year, we do a, like a, a, a training to kind of identify whether it's a spill, a, um, an intentional or, you know, other types of illicit discharge. Yeah, that could be, uh, fats, oils, grease, like an overflow, SSO type, uh, sanitary overflow. Or it could be like somebody just, you know, intentionally dumped it out their grease trap, because it costs a lot of money to have it pumped, right? And, uh, and then there's also the much simpler, that sounds like that wouldn't be as bad as it is, but if you don't do, uh, proper erosion control or obstruction project, all that silt, it, it lines the surface, and then you have no light coming through, and it decreases the oxygen and the lake, you have a die-off. And it's, even though it doesn't sound like it'd be that bad, it really is eventually, which is, you know, kind of interesting, so. Uh, and then the other is to review those ordinances and update them each year. Typically, uh, we, we have a rather new one, uh, so it's not like that, that's pretty fresh, it's only, I think, two years old at this point, so we don't expect there to be a ton of updates, uh, for a while, next one. Um, this is the one that, that's, that's, uh, we'll call awkward, you know, we'll call it what it is. They want us to review, and I got it down to the specific ones, because I, you know, the, while this is an important program, the DEP will make it as big as you like it. So they said every business, whoa, how, how are we going to hit every business? Are we going to go to the local CBAs, right? We're going, are we going to go to the realtors? What are they going to be doing, you know, what's, what's, what's our objective? And they said, oh, no, no, businesses that have the propensity to, uh, to potentially induce, uh, a, a great harm to, to your, uh, collection or your, uh, lakes and outfalls, right? And it's, well, what about the ones that already have a separate permit? You guys are already inspecting those, right? And so there's, yeah, that's true, okay, so we, what we got to do is food, yard, vehicle, any type of vehicle or anything, is just ones that don't have, like, I'll say a higher level of scrutiny already. Uh, just, we tried to make it as simple and as smart as we could, they want us to only get 20% of those. Um, and we kind of, uh, developed a, a letter to give them, just, just so that they know what we're doing, and, and we actually, uh, had specific flyers made, you know, for your community, so you can hand it to them, you're like, hey, look, this isn't a, a made-up thing, this is, this is why we're doing it, this is what your potential is. If you aren't doing, you know, because sometimes it, it happens, you get there, it's, it's doing something that they, we're not supposed to. As long as you, you can educate them and prevent it from happening again, you can solve. So, uh, and then they also want, and this is kind of funny, uh, they want you to identify three hazards associated with dumping, uh, which is like through, you could, I don't know, it's, 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 it's funny, but it's like, whatever they are, uh, you know, and that's, uh, you know, uh, it, it's, it, it can be the type of hazards, it can be where, it can be where it's dumped. Um, it can be, uh, the type of chemicals or waste, or whatever it is, you know, I mentioned a few, but they just want it like, uh, you know, website or mailings or whatever, and again, probably, a lot of this is easiest maybe done through your Facebook or other social, social media.
So are you saying that city staff is the ones that are going to have to go out and do these checks?
Uh, that is what I'm saying, however, we did identify that we would, uh, we would assist on the first few.
Silves?
Yeah, we, we are, yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and we were actually, so, uh, yeah, with, with your group in, in particular, we wanted to, um, you know, just, I'll say, um, especially since I knew, uh, David was newer to stormwater, we didn't want to just send him out there and, and have him, you know, not know. And just, and hopefully I can lighten mood a little bit, it's not, um, it, yes, it's life or death for, you know, a, a marine animal or whatever, but really, what we wanted to do is kind of show them, here's, here's why we're doing it. It's only these specific businesses, only specific types.
So this would be watershed that goes into the storm drain system?
Correct, yes.
So basically, you're checking whatever you deem would be the most downhill storm drain from the property, right?
Yeah, yeah, you're looking at any of them, so, and let me, let me caution, what we're really looking for here is evidence that they're actually dumping something.
I see.
We are absolutely hoping it's not happening.
Sure.
And we don't expect to find, I, I would say we expect to find very few.
Yeah.
Because I, I.
Most common is probably changing your oil and.
Precisely, right. Correct, yes, that, that's exactly it, and so you're thinking, you know, that's exactly it, so the, uh, well, and these are the most common, exactly, food. One of the most common is, you've, you've got a watered up, uh, a grease trap, you empty it.
Yeah.
And it's easier and cheaper to empty it into your, your, uh, stormwater system, hopefully nobody sees it, but that's, that causes a fantastic amount of growth, and wrong kind of growth, inside of a, uh, a lake, uh, potentially different, uh, dangerous bacteria. Uh, yard waste, it doesn't sound that dangerous, but what happens is, it's just like, uh, if you think about the, uh, if you ever go by the Indian River, little, little, right, and, and it's, it, it had kind of ended season, had a lot of growth, and it dies off. the, the, right? And, and it's, it, it had kind of ended season, had a lot of growth and it dies off. That's exactly what, what happens there. So it dies off. Well, then it releases all of the nitrogen phosphorus, whatever, back into the water. Like it's re-consumed. And then it causes like another uh, incredible growth period, which is, it's, it's just a whole cycle of it.
So let's say you guys go out, you see a automotive shop that's totally just dumping things right on their concrete, whatever. Clearly getting washed it. What happens to that?
Uh, we would suggest then if, if it's, if it's that obvious, because you know, they, they would know, uh, we would report them to uh, first we would go to code enforcement and you guys would issue some fine, right? If it's that obvious, if it's a time, you know, it's usually there's amounts, you know, the checkered things, right? If it was uh, you know, if, then we also then recommend a, a re uh, re-contact, a re uh, re uh, review and uh, re-inspect, make sure it's not happening. And if it's not, it ends there. Um, but normally, a- at least in base ones, you have to report, you know, any of these sort of violations. And usually you just track them. Say we, and we identified it. Did it require a second one? Maybe it required a fine. Maybe it didn't. Maybe it was small enough that it was a, you know, a small amount or whatever. They're just, you know, uh, if it was a, a, a small spill, but if it's very obvious like that, yeah, you're probably do a.
You're looking for things that are going into storm drains. So if like, if a business has, like you say, their own permit, so they have their own drainage, their own pond, that's something you're not checking.
Well, so, so the, the, if they have their own pond and they have their own, it's called a DRP, it's their own resource permit. What would happen that they're, they're going to, and we see it, I would still suggest it's, it's, it has nothing to do with your system. Boy, uh, I would suggest code enforcement, talk to them anyways. It's, I'm sure it's against, you know, a different code. But it's um, it is going to be uh, you know, somewhat of a danger, but it's not. If it's a small amount or, you know, and it's some wash water or something that's going into a uh, into their own pond, it's gonna get treated. If it's like a wash water of like a, uh, like a, a vehicle or something like that. But if it's, if they don't have a pond, there's no treatment system. There's no, there's no protection.
Yeah. So you, you get reported to code enforcement first and then if they don't comply with code enforcement, does it then go to DEP?
Uh, yeah.
We have a ordinance in place of how exactly we handle those types of things. So that way, everyone's going through the same process and nobody can scream or being treated unfairly and et cetera, et cetera.
The uh, the, the ordinance is, yeah, it's, it's pretty specific on the things that are not allowed.
Yeah.
And then it, it absolutely ties it straight back into your, that's, that's has its own ordinance, uh, the uh, uh, so that, you know, the first infraction, if it's minor, is just a letter. As in, you know, it's, it's not, it's, hey, brings back into compliance or else, right?
Do you think this is something that's likely going to escalate in years to come?
Um, yes, meaning um, I know, and, and I can, you guys were actually, I'll call it somewhat lucky, they changed the permit requirements and they're much more in depth. And that was just adopted. And so luckily you guys have five years to kind of figure out wh- how everyone else is addressing the new permit, because it's, it's much, which it kind of threw me off. I was like, why are we doing it this way? Because the, the other one, this is, it's pretty straightforward. It kind of suggests how you should fill it in and, and what's similar to that. And you can look around your area and, and, and realize how you're going to uh, address it and meet the intent. Um, but the new one's more, I'll call it open-ended, which is in, in one way is good, but in another way, it can be very time consuming because look, I mean, the, the intent of these, and when you file that notice of intent, you want to do exactly what they're asking for, but know if, if you offer too many extra things, they will make you track all that too. Because it's, it's, we don't, we want it to be a common sense without tons and tons and tons of paperwork, you know, if, if that makes sense, because that's what it can turn into. We're trying to prevent.
You give them an inch, they're gonna hold you that mile.
Yes, 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 absolutely. And I'm not saying they're bad people, that they're,
I know.
The intent's there, the intent's there. It's just whatever you can give them, they'll take it. They'll file it in their big file.
Yeah.
So um, and then so going on to uh, element four, and this is just related to, I'll say, pretty common sense. Uh, stormwater runoff attracts, uh, attract construction activities, the number of billing and review, no changes uh, to your ordinance, which is also, all of these are related. So we put all of it in one ordinance. That's just happens to be the number. So they all tie in together so that uh, you didn't have to create an ordinance for each one and really accomplish the process. And so, and then this is, again, like I said, this is item five. You already do this. This is a requirement. Anyone building anything, anywhere has to meet this. So you just let the state uh, handle this through the ERP, whether it's uh, water management districts with south or southwest, anywhere it's built here. Um, or the DEP if, depending on the ownership. And if they, some, sometimes it's a great deterrent. The DEP still handles that themselves. Ironically, completely different group, even though they're in the same building on Blairstone and, and the same offices, they don't really uh, know each other necessarily.
Yeah.
Next one. Uh, and then there's the standard pollution prevention. This is just again, through training of employees. And then you document um, various inspections, your parks, your open spaces. I like, I like to call it your stormwater collection structure. Just note how much is cleaned out of those structures and how frequently you do it. Uh, utilize the standard operating procedures and your uh, best management practices for. And then that's generally it. And that's one. So the, these are the new items. That's what I was just trying to uh, call out specifically. Uh, and it's going out to existing businesses as, as we mentioned. Yeah, we, we were gonna go out like a, a day worth of, five, we're trying to hit five businesses roughly. What, what, an early item, what we really want to kind of know is, is a list of those. I don't know if you have a database somewhere where, you know, so that we will figure it out for you, which ones you, you know, identify which ones you should and should not, you know, obviously. I'll say by the name of them and, you know, it doesn't, it wouldn't take that long, a couple of minutes each to tick it off, go, no, 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 no. And then what we'd like to do is, you know, kind of drop it in. That way you can have an area uh, so that, you know, is, it's, it's easiest to hit uh, like the northwest quadrant, then the southwest quadrant, then the or these five, then the southeast, then, you know, central, you know, this is obviously central is probably your, your biggest location, but you can, even that one, maybe you can split it in that type of. So um, and then uh, there's, so there are, you know, again, there's, there are, because of this, there are, you know, obviously I'll say some, some higher costs to the city just for monitoring, right? I mean, I, I, I think it should be pretty obvious that there's a lot more work involved to try to track all this stuff. It's not just um, you know, the, try to uh, figure out which lines are, are broken and are cracked and need to be aligned or fixed. It's how much to clean out of that and do they, gotta contact the public to get involved in that. Once you get it going and, you know, some of these things are a little easier and that was, I'll say, that was definitely what we found last time, what the last uh, report was really pretty easy. But uh, but now there's a bunch more changes. And yes, and you know, to your point earlier, does it get more complicated? Yes, it doesn't get, unfortunately with this system, it never gets simpler. Right? Um, it's uh, but it becomes easier uh, as, you know, as, as the time goes on. Um, it's, it's one of those, you know, it's like a genie you can't get back in the bottle.
Sure.
Business. You get it, you hit a, a number, I guess, unless somehow like Ophit Chovy is, you know, fixed and there's no issues and you, you know, it, it, that's a, that's a, a real wish. I mean, I know for all of us in the industry, right? So, um, but uh, but it just means, you know, some higher investment in infrastructure, more work for uh, Rick and David's team. And, you know, again, I, I know, uh, I didn't see David here tonight, but I did see Rick. I know he, he works with him. So um, it's a higher degree of maintenance, more inspection, a little more intrusive to the public, you know, just for those specific types of businesses. Uh, but that's, I'll, I'll say that's one of the reasons up here. Just so you know that we're not trying to give them a hard time. It's, it's a, it's a requirement. You know, and uh, I think we do it quick. I think it's painless. As long as they don't think, you know, we don't have to go inside. There's nothing inside that we need to see. You know, and all of this is like, it's gonna be in their driveway or in their parking lot or, you know, uh, out back. It's, so it's, it's just to hand it to them, hey, we want to take a look at your MS four or what, uh, just your, you know, your inverts or your, your drainage collection structure. It's just to make sure. We'll look downstream where it's going, see if there's evidence of things and then we'll be done. And I think there's not much. It's just, yeah, again, uh, we've got, you know, some of the public outreach materials. We, we've got a lot of that to you, uh, and then making it available, uh. So some of this, I, I updated it a little bit uh, since this one. You guys are already doing the personnel training. Uh, just some of it is coordinating with internal departments for the rotation. One of, one of the things I'll caution on. And I'm not sure how, how exactly you want to handle it, uh, but at one point, um, county was doing one hundred percent of your building permit, but it got split at some point in this, this in pass. And I, I'm not sure exactly what happened, but uh, I don't want to recreate it, but it was uh, they are still doing your building permit, but associated with the building is all of the land. Well, so the building has nothing to do then with this, right? But the land does. So as they develop the land, um, it's kind of like you guys take it, look at it, you know, it, it did somebody take a look at that permit and just endorsing, making sure that it meets the intents and whether they make a deal with the county to have that done, or you have like some outside tours, or uh, you have created a system internally, that's, that's the one option. And we just, that was just something we found uh, last, last couple of times out. So. Let's just start it, you know. Take everyone aware of that.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
If there's any questions, there's no action item. This is already yours, but I, if there's any questions, uh, and I, I do have a copy of the permit and all of that.
I have one question.
Yes.
First of all, very excited.
Thank you.
Easy to understand. I appreciate that. But on the uh, construction activities, really permits, especially ones that are new structure going right on the lake itself. Ready to track that. So that's something.
So, uh, and this is what I want to caution is. So right now, um, I believe, uh, state, this group is, but uh, at one point it was uh, and basically they, they, they create a law, we get, we created some forms, so you can do this. We can, but I, I, I don't want to, you know, over. So I, I, I love to sell you services to do administrative business, it's, it's big. So I don't necessarily, you know, yeah, DOT does that because again, it's, it's, it's gigantic program. And as they come through your area, they do that. But what, what I would say is on, on that one, what they have you do is they go out while something's being built. I'll give an example. Um, usually these are gonna have a connection to your stormwater or other, the, or your, I'm sorry, wastewater or water system. So I'll take a look at it and make sure that as they're going out there to get, look at inverts and, you know, things like that, they can take a look at the uh, to make sure the soap fences are up and uh, they, they have the, the proper, uh, there's kind of anti uh, tracking materials. So you don't track much material out and things like that. Yeah, exactly. Correct. Not residential, not only when they're doing, see, and that's, that's, that's the only separation. When they're doing the build out of uh, of the actual uh, community where it has its pond.
Right.
That's the only time that applies, right? Once it has its pond, it's all gonna run into the pond. So the pond's kind of gonna do the work of it. And then they'll be the ones that are not compliant. If the local site doesn't do it, if that makes sense.
Sure.
Sure.
All right. Well, we thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you next year, right?
Hopefully soon.
All right. At number seventeen, we have a public hearing. It's the second reading for this fourteen dash twenty twenty one.
So I want to see if I've got part four, I mean, if I've got part ten and a property rights element to ensure private property rights are considered in local decision-making system before statute one sixty three four three one seven seven section six, provide for contractors to report department that come up to review compliance.
Jeff, if you could uh, provide a background for the new council members.
Right? Sure, absolutely. I don't have a presentation on this one. This is second reading tonight. Um, this is essentially um, amendments to your city's comprehensive plan. Uh, this filed heels of House Bill fifty nine, which in fact uh, essentially it's a mandate from the state to without any private property rights element in your city's comprehensive plan. Uh, before you, the package, we'll see there's, there's a series of four provisions for policies uh, that we proposed in that element. The city's essentially doing this already. Um, this came through the legislature. Uh, it's now in Florida statutes. It was a bill that was passed that essentially said, all of the governments have to adopt the private property rights element to recognize uh, further uh, the local government's um, desire, goal, vision to adjust property rights for the local community. Um, so what you have before you, it's embedded through the Department of Economic Opportunity. Um, see if I can see staff's words with DEO uh, to draft the language that's in front of you tonight. Uh, this was part of the state language that, that come from uh, legislature. Uh, it has the whole nuances to it. Uh, essentially it's been vetted through them um, for, for compliance. Um, again, tonight is second reading on this. Uh, it's been through planning and zoning board. It's been through city council for first reading and of course, then it went up to DEO for, for review and compliance. Um, and now it's back to you all tonight. Um, the caveat or the, the hang up to, to all of us is the city cannot adopt or move on any further future land use amendments, both not or text or comprehensive plan. Until this gets adopted. Um, that's essentially how they, they hung this over our heads uh, to get it done. Um, but it's, it's for y'all tonight. So uh, if you have any questions beyond that.
Any questions for Jeff? Seeing as he said, ordinance number fourteen dash twenty one will be a public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to speak can now do so. Seeing no takers, public hearing ordinance fourteen dash twenty twenty one is now closed. Council has no further questions. I'm looking for a motion.
Make a motion to approve ordinance number fourteen dash twenty twenty one.
Is there a second? My second. We have a motion in a second. Please call a roll.
Council member McGuire?
Yes.
Council member McCure? Yes. Council member Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passing.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
At number eighteen is the public hearing and second reading for ordinance seventeen dash twenty twenty.
Ordinance to the code section two dash thirty three of the city code, increasing council pay and allowing participation by council members in the city insurance program. By the conflict, sincerely by inclusion of code and effective.
Thank you. So several years. I believe it was uh, two years ago that the city council adopted the uh, insurance rate that would be given to council members and they had the option to either take the insurance or they would be given that. Um, and then every year we adjust it based on the insurance cost that the city's paying.
Any questions for David on that? Seeing none, public hearing for ordinance seventeen dash twenty twenty one is now open. Anyone wishing to speak can now do so. Seeing no speakers, public hearing board at seventeen dash twenty twenty one is now closed. Looking for a motion.
Make a motion to approve. I have a number P eighteen, ordinance number seventeen dash twenty twenty one.
Is there a second?
Our second.
We have a motion in a second. We'll now call a roll.
Council member McGuire?
Yes.
Council member McCure?
Yes.
Council member Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passing.
Thank you. First reading for ordinance eighteen dash twenty twenty one.
In order to meaning the future land use map, the city big on part four, admitting twenty five eight parcels of land to nine acres located west of the Purd Boulevard and Link Purd Boulevard from future land use of county medium density residential to the city low density residential, transmitting some amendments to the board department by opportunity for notification purposes only, by for, so really by for conflict by infection.
Thank you, Jeff. What do we have?
All right. Any councils? Um, this is a request by Southern Homes.
This is a request by Southern Homes of Polk County, and their request is for a future land use map amendment and rezoning of twenty five parcels. Spans across nine, approximately nine acres, as you can see on the screen, it's the, the parcels that are highlighted there in yellow. The purpose of this request is to apply city assignments, city future land use and city zone. The background on this briefly, this property was, was annexed into the city back in two thousand thirteen, I want to say. Generally, property gets assigned land use and zoning as it comes in. If it doesn't, it still retains its county land use and zoning assignments. So as this one came in in two thousand thirteen, it did not get assigned as city future land use and zoning. Fast forward to today, we have a developer who wants to purchase these properties to develop single family homes on them. So we're going through the process now to assign the land use and the zoning on the property. So I'm just going to run through real quick, next, next slide. So the existing future land use on the site today is this county median density residential, and that allows for eight dwelling units an acre. Next slide. And the, the zoning of those properties are county R one, which follow and respect the, the future land use again, eight dwelling units per acre. Next slide. The proposed future land use would be for the city's low density residential, which allows a maximum density of six dwelling units an acre. Next slide. And then the companion rezoning, the proposed rezoning would be for a city R one A low density residential, which actually limits the, the maximum density again to four dwelling units an acre. Next slide. A lot of that really doesn't matter at this point, the property has already been subdivided, it's been recorded with the county. These lots are there today, there's no intention to, to increase that density on the property. All of the lots that are there, they're ready for single family development. This is essentially an apples to apples, bringing the, the county future land use and zoning into the city to allow the developers to go ahead and, and develop these properties. In terms of public facilities and services, we always do an, an analysis or review of that. Again, because this has already been subdivided, it's already part of the city system, the infrastructure's there. There's no additional impacts at this point. Essentially, it's, as I said, more formally to make sure the property gets a city future land use. So there, there'll be two actions tonight, the first one will be for the future land use, and then the second action will be for the rezoning. But we'll see and answer any questions.
Any questions for Jeff?
Well, basically what we're doing is limiting the number of dwellings in half of what the region itself has on.
Well, it's, we need, we need to provide that in terms of, you know, what is the impact on the, the community? But really, as I said, it really doesn't matter, the, the lots are already divided. So if there, if there was a request to move forward, at this point, that is not what the, the vision is. The vision is to build up the, the existing lots. Right now, you could build out eight units per acre across the entire nine, nine acres. It's already subdivided out, so unless somebody wants to come forward and split this up more, which they probably could at four dwelling units per acre, these are large enough lots that they're not going to do that, but they, their intent is to develop these properties, as they said today.
Southern Homes is building quite a few developments around Avon Park, probably one of the easiest for us to access is at the end of Gaster Road. You drive all the way to the end, look on the right, there's a new development in there. Most of the homes that I've seen coming from, and also in Sunlight, there are quite a few. They're larger homes, they're larger than average, these lots are already subdivided, they're already, if you go out there, you'll see exactly where each one is. So I just think like these are, are going to keep them the same. But as you said, there's two different things that we are approving. First would be for ordinance eighteen dash twenty twenty one, it's already been read into the record. That would be for the future land use map, and then we'll do the official zoning. So is there a motion for ordinance number eighteen dash twenty twenty one?
Make a motion to approve, I have number eighteen dash twenty twenty one.
Okay, is there a second? We have a motion in a second, are there further questions?
I just have one question on the transportation and traffic. You don't really see any excess traffic coming in and out of those two roads.
So again, generally, if we were talking about a raw piece of land and they were coming in with this and we hadn't subdivided yet, essentially the, the property's already been reviewed for that, they've got the, they've used the word entitlements. They've essentially gone through that review process, it's been approved through the platting process when it went through the county. Will it create more traffic than is there today? Most certainly, yes, because they're taking, you know, properties that haven't been developed. And of course, people are driving on the road, so, so the answer is yes, but is it going to negatively impact this area? Probably not, they reviewed all of that, and that's okay.
Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McHale?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passing.
Next up, we have ordinance nineteen dash twenty twenty one.
So it's meaning the official zoning map, city of Avon Park Florida, meaning twenty five parcels planned, total nine acres located on West Lake Bird Boulevard and Lake Bird Boulevard from zoning the county R one residential district to city R one A low density residential. Provide for certain building, provide conflict and fight effectively.
As Jeff said, this is the accompanying ordinance for the one we just approved. Is there a motion for this?
Make a motion to approve, I have number nineteen dash twenty twenty one, please.
Is there a second? My second. We have a motion in a second, is there further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McHale?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passing.
Jeff, thank you for your wonderful time.
Mayor, what we have here, could he stay and we bring up one that's not on here, I spoke to him, we had a meeting earlier, but in reference to the, remember there was a first reading you asked about the, the last meeting about vacation and easement over on East Lakeview? And you passed the first, but it was step, for Jeff to get back with staff, because some staff said that you probably shouldn't vacate. There was a stormwater issue over there, have Rick Reed can speak up and, and Jeff.
I don't think it's time to vacate that current situation, because we have an area. Because somehow it's overlooked on a house, we put stuff through the drain, it's not currently working, and it's rerouted and through that area.
Yeah, for, for council, for, for the new members, this was a request that came a couple months ago. It was a request to essentially vacate a portion of right of way or public right of way, an extra private property owner's home. That process essentially, when it comes to the city, it needs to be reviewed by private and public utility providers. At that time, it didn't appear that there were any issues, so there was no objections by private and public, public being the city. It was brought up at the first reading that there may be some drainage issues or that the city uses a portion of this right of way for drainage purposes. So the request was have staff go back, take a look, is this something that we need to maintain? We don't want to vacate, once you vacated, it becomes, you know, title property to, to the folks that own the private property adjacent to the right of way. It was found, I guess afterwards, that there is indeed a need to keep this as public right of way. It's only been through first reading at this point. So my understanding is, is the city's position would be to object at this point to not vacate that right of way, which would still be considered public at this point. So I think it was the city manager and then the public works and utilities position to come back to city council to let them know that the finding was, we do want to keep this, we do object to that area being vacated. And so I don't know what the, the action would need to be other than to let you all know that at this point, the, the city is objecting to, to that vacation.
Jerry, can you help us out with what we should do?
Well, the easiest thing is just not to bring it up for a second reading ever again. Probably the cleanest way of doing it is to read it for a second time and reuse it. But if you do that, you're going to have expensive advertisement for that, the ordinance, so I'm certain this that you ask staff not to bring that back up again.
Does anyone object to asking staff to not bring it up again?
No.
Do we need a motion for that, Jerry?
No.
Okay. Steph, you have your directive?
We do. Thank you, Jeff. Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, we have item number twenties, your resolution twenty twenty one dash sixteen per payment plan.
Resolution, city of Avon Park Florida, provide for approval of revised deferred payment plan lien agreement and mortgage for persons qualified for deferred payment of utility capacity fees, providing for effective date. Just to, as a matter of information, it's just asked the attorney in the, at our firm that litigates liens, mortgages to, to our document, to make sure it's pretty solid on this. If we're going to give somebody that kind of leeway, we certainly want to make sure that if they don't pay, that they, we have something to force with.
Sure.
And this is what we do over the course of these changes, the new agreements.
This was a program, obviously it can be quite expensive to build a business or build a home and connect to the city's utility, so it was brought up years ago that we might be able to do a deferred payment plan. It's been utilized fairly heavily over the years by homeowners and business owners. We have a couple of businesses that have wanted to come, that may have a bill of twenty or thirty thousand dollars for a startup business, that could be a pretty hard pill to swallow. So absolutely, I agree that it's a great program for those that want or need to utilize it, so my strong support. We have any questions about this?
Can I add something on that?
Yes, sir.
Actually, Jerry, we're going to have to do another resolution for the interest. Right, there's still showing five and a half on here, and the ordinance said that there'd be a resolution every year on interest, so that'll have to be done.
Do you know what the interest is now?
It's five and a half, that's what it's been for years.
Can we just amend this resolution by, by motion?
That'd be up to you, but in, in the ordinance you did, it says that there has to be a resolution done every year, so if we can do it here, that would be good.
Okay, was the interest rate tied to a particular thing, or was that just an arbitrary number that we?
I think it was arbitrarily done.
Jerry, is there any issue with picking a number, or should it doesn't have to be tied to some type of prime rate or something?
Well, it's, it should be, it should be tied to something realistic, like a prime rate. And just let you know that all kinds of prime rates, some banks have, have different bank prime rates by, by bank. So you'd have to pick a bank that have a prime rate, you know, the, the local bank or something like that. Prime plus two, or five plus three.
Can we approve this at, at current and then have staff reach out to a local bank or some type of interest keeping entity that we can then go by every year?
Just do a resolution for interest rate then.
Okay. So we can approve this as stated and then have a separate resolution and mark it suggestion. Okay. Any questions on?
Only question I have is that twenty years for small projects seems like a long extension. Somebody can't pay it out, I mean, it's like the example we put in here, you know, it's only looking at two thousand four hundred fifty dollars, so that seems like a long thing drawn up in twenty years. So anyway, we could just, the cost of ten years, or twenty years, seven, nine.
So the, the practicality is, you know, this is how banks make money, right? So what ends up happening, if somebody buys a home, they pay interest for twenty years, they wind up paying for that home twice.
Yeah.
So it is in our best interest that they use the full twenty years.
Okay.
Particularly if you do not need the money for day to day operations, which we don't. So it's more or less an investment and it works out well for them, works out really well for us.
And then come in and pay it off anytime you want.
Sure. There's no early payout penalty as a, a bank normally would. Any other questions?
This is for residential and commercial.
All connectors. Any other question? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Make a motion, we have, we have number D twenty.
Is there a second? My second. We have a motion in a second, further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McHale?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor? Yes. Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passing.
Thank you, I have number twenty one, it's the contract between Florida Department of Corrections and City of Avon Park. Mark, do you want to brief us?
Yes, Jerry's checked it, said nothing to change on, first time I heard that, it's in the best measure. This is for inmate workers, if we ever get them back, as you know, we haven't had them for the last year and a half after COVID. We had them for a day, they pulled them back in because some of their inmates got COVID. I don't know when they're going to allow them to come back out, this is statewide, because they're so short of correction officers, they pull their corrections officers in to bring this crew out. But it's greatly needed, seventy five thousand dollars a year, but we couldn't, it costs us four hundred thousand dollars or five hundred if we bought the equipment to have a five person crew out here. They do US twenty seven is the main one, and we can barely keep up with that, and then we can use them in other places.
Yep. We desperately need them back, so hopefully we get them soon. Are there any questions on this contract?
Has anybody tried to contact them and see how much longer they're going to?
Cruise in?
Actually, I have, I had a lunch meeting with the warden, he was talking about getting a crew together and we supervise them. That fell through, and actually Shirley, who knows him, told me he's supposed to be reaching out to me again, but I just heard on the radio coming in yesterday morning that they're still low on staff to get these up, the state up. They're starting to pay five thousand dollars and they're paying three thousand dollars to relocate, so they're dealing like rest of correction and law enforcement now, trying to find people.
Yep, any other questions? There a motion?
Make a motion to approve, I have number D twenty one, please.
Is there a second? We have a motion in a second, now call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McHale?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passing.
I have number twenty two, is to be agreement between the Adventist Health, Prom Care and City of Avon Park. David?
This is the two year agreement between the provider that we use for our pre-employment screen and any employees that we send to prom care for workers comp that need to be evaluated after injuries. According to the hospital, there is no change in the fee since the twenty nineteen contract.
Awesome. Any questions?
Use them for COVID testing too, if necessary.
Have we used them? We don't send anybody for COVID testing, they, they do that themselves, and, and as a matter of fact, they just asked me today that, or it was the city paying for anybody that went down there for COVID testing. I said, no, we don't authorize that, if they go down there, that's out of their own pocket.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve, I have number D twenty two, please.
Is there a second? We have a motion in a second, now call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McHale?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passing.
I have number twenty three, is the motorized scooter program operating agreement.
As you call, we passed a new ordinance for our code regarding allowing micro mobility, including motorized scooters because of the proposal by Bird. Bird rides, these are motorized scooters, like skateboards and handles, and they have motors on them, and they're very big thing in big cities right now, they're just hundreds and hundreds of them. So it's, it's, it's coming, as I mentioned before. This is the agreement that now authorizes the bird rides to operate their, their other system here in the city, under the ordinance requirements.
Any questions for Jerry on this?
I do, please. I don't see any exhibit here or attachment about the locations where they're going to be deployed, have they decided yet?
It's not been decided, they're supposed to get together with the city manager, determine where those initial corrals are supposed to be.
Okay. And is there some type of a trial time limit where we can, after six months, verify things are good on both sides or in the contract?
This, this is not a long term contract that we have, as I recall, there's a I don't find that.
Thought there was something in there, but.
Yeah, so it's a very short termination period if we are unhappy at any time, really, as it's here.
And on page three, we can ask for any time, a, a number of different things, on how many the rent, where they're, where they are, what's going on. Actually, we had somebody from Bird online, if you want to, and we got Dan Feathers who I'll be, him and I are getting together after this assignment this week, and decide where they're going to be set up, so if you have questions.
They've been a very agreeable bunch of people to deal with thus far, so I'm sure that if you're happy to try to entertain any requests that council has. And they're obviously here to have their scooters utilized, so they want. They're obviously here to have their scooters utilized, so they wanna make the best of it. You have any questions for them? You have a thing?
Just explain to me how we work, I I'd like to know, I mean, I don't know the whole process about how somebody can just.
First call, my name is Dan Feathers, I'm sitting in Florida and Portland. Um what you do is you go online with your smartphones and there's a an app called Bird app, you download it on your phone. We tie it to a credit card and afterward you follow the instructions, you scan the code on the scooter. And then you rent, you just rent it and it's a timed ride. And we have a geo fence that we have put up or that will be putting up around Avon Park, they're allowed to operate inside the geo fence. Um as far as uh the rides go, um you guys have your your sidewalks that we'll be using. Uh they're supposed to use helmets, um supposed to obey the laws of the road and and ride safely. I know um it's rea- it's really not hard, they're a lot of fun, um and we've been seeing a lot of people. Low-income people using them to get to and from work, so it's providing a lot of people uh mobility to get um to different places within an arc. We've had a great response so far, so.
So what is the liability, should somebody rent one using our sidewalks?
Uh we've talked to Jerry about that, it's it's covered by Bird.
Okay.
Yeah, they have a fairly significant insurance requirement, which will have to have their certificate holding the city. And they identify the city against claims, disagreement, and uh the insurance is pretty significant.
What age would we decide on for this?
Um you're supposed to be eighteen and older to uh rent these. But I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm not gonna be out there IDing everybody who's on it. Um assuming we have had kids out riding that, get that their parents for their credit card, you know, on the kid's phone. And they're renting rented that way, uh we do require helmets to be worn, um and like I said, you have to obey the rules of the road. So, um but as far as as protecting them, if a police officer sees somebody riding one, they have every. Right to pull them over. Uh I'm sorry, underage kid riding, they have every opportunity to pull them over, but you are supposed to be eighteen and older to run scooters.
So let me make sure I understand, they're written on road or on sidewalk?
Well, it um here in the the city, the main street. Um since we don't, we don't have any jurisdiction over Main Street, that's actually uh the DOT right away. Uh they're required to get DOT's approval before they use it on the street. Uh the sidewalk, uh that's up, that's gonna be, you know, um up to the the city. Manager is gonna to discuss with them where, you know, what areas are gonna be uh geo fenced in. That they're allowed to use it in, and we can keep manipulating that the way it goes, because uh our our, to answer your question. And we have ten-day notice if we want to terminate, but you know, we're gonna try and work with them and get things worked the way everybody can live with it. And uh it can be a beneficial thing for everybody.
And I'm not gonna lie, I'm, there's a, there is a little bit of a period where people need to learn what to do and how to ride scooters. You know, people aren't gonna know right away exactly what to do on the scooters, so um.
Uh I I've I've ridden a number of times, many, many times, and so, and if I can do it, you can.
And I'm gonna go ahead and say, Jerry, there's not gonna be hundreds of scooters here in Avon Park, you put a kind of a cap limit on. How many scooters gonna be out there, you're not gonna see a couple hundred on Main Street, I promise you that.
They'll limit it to fifty at first, and uh, you know, then we'll see how that works.
So that's my next question, we're we're limited to fifty during the trial trial here, right? And then who gets to decide how many scooters he has out there?
You, you will.
No, I mean, it's a company or?
Up to fifty, they they decide, because we don't require them to have fifty, we just say, then you can't have any more than fifty.
Oh, can't have any more than fifty?
Yeah, what we have is seventy-five in our fleet that we'll be putting here in Avon Park, twenty-five will be in the um. In the docking station and charging station, some of them will of course have accidents, a brake handle will break. Uh light will go out, they have headlights on, they have taillights on them, if I would have known, we would have had new council, I probably would have brought one up here so you guys could see.
Yeah, you know how to use it, right? Oh yeah, oh yeah, definitely. You have to push it and get it going before you hit the little throttle.
They do have a uh speed limit of fifteen miles per hour. Well, of course, if you're a big guy like me, I might go slower, you know, if somebody's smaller, I might go, you know.
That's a statutory limitation to.
And if there's restrictions somewhere in the city that they cannot go, does the, does the scooter automatic cutoff or you can cut it off?
We would have to get together and we can block off places, when we first started Sebring, they had a skate park there. And we were finding one or two broken scooters, you know, a week until we found out about it and we actually put a fence around. Skate park, so it cuts off before it gets there, it beats you at you, um and then it cuts off.
And and I've heard it beat myself before, so, uh but uh, yeah, it's, it's, it's called geo fencing. They basically uh can say where it's going and they're gonna talk, the public works and city and city manager about where. That's gonna happen at first and then, like I said, we can expand it more, one place we do not want them crossing twenty-seven, that's that's a. That's a really serious uh issue, and so that'll definitely be something I recommend, because that's, nobody can save the cost twenty-seven. That's gonna be a a bad for, a bad deal, so it should, that should be one geo fence right there.
Uh that that is definitely uh inside the, or I'm sorry, outside our geo fence that.
But you're working on approval from DOT for Main Street, right, because we don't even know the sidewalks in in uh Main Street, those are DOT sidewalks.
I'll be honest, that's my partner's uh, my partner's side of it.
But you can't go out there till you get the DOT approval to us.
Correct.
Any questions?
So the wear and tear on the, on the scooter is?
On us.
And the insurance is on you guys as well?
There's actually a copy in there.
There are motion? Anyone? Make a motion, we approve item number twenty-three, there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, this is the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McHirry?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yeah.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, ma'am, you say. I have number twenty-four, we have a donation of the city's nineteen ninety-five fire engine to South Florida State College, chief?
I'm gonna make this quick, we have a uh twenty-six-year-old fire truck that currently needs a three-thousand-dollar repair to its pumping networks. Currently use the college for part of our training, now this doesn't have anything to do with that, they're not gonna stop us training if we don't donate it. But they currently do not have a fire truck that operates well, so the idea was to donate it to them. They realize it's a three-thousand-dollar repair, but that's much cheaper than buying a fire truck.
Sure.
If we donated to them, they would fix it and use it, I did some looking, um. Few months ago, we found roughly six to seven thousand dollars about this fire truck was gonna get at auction. I called Insight Auctioneer just last week to try to get the updated prices out, it's a few months ago. He's saying he think we would get about three thousand dollars right now, so it's not, even though it drives and runs, it doesn't seem to be worth. It's not gonna lose a whole lot, but that's up to you guys.
Sure.
To decide what to do.
Well, uh obviously, like I say, we utilize the uh college pretty heavily and uh anyway, we can help them out. We certainly want to, I'm definitely not opposed to donating it, so what says the rest of the council?
I think it's a great idea, I think it's great for the community to have it out there to train for business, so I'm all for it.
Anyone opposed?
One other question.
Anyone have a question for chief? Anyone wanna make a motion?
I have one question.
Go ahead.
They're gonna leave the city of Avon Park on it, right?
That's fine with me, it's up to you guys, if you want it off, we'll take it off, but my plan is to leave it on.
Leave it on.
Leave it on, please.
There are motion?
Make a motion, approve item number D twenty-four.
We have a motion and a second, this is the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McHirry?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yeah.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
We have any, any updates?
Um just, I would like to ask uh the new commissioners, so if you'd like to contact me regarding. Your um requirements as to the Sunshine Act and the Public Records Act. Um especially the Sunshine Act, which is something you could easily file, you not even realizing you're doing it. Please, please do that, you know, and uh I would be happy to give a a short uh workshop on that. Before a meeting soon, if you.
Yeah, I was.
Staff wants to set up, set that up.
I was gonna suggest that we go ahead and do that, um I know, you know, we have the annual requirement, so could it be?
I'd like to do that, that, it takes, that's a four-hour. I do, I had just gave it to Zoffler Springs, uh three weeks, so I can do that.
I would like to get it scheduled sometime before the end of the year, you think that's possible?
Sure, um just give me a call, some where the staff wants to set it up, um I I could uh, you have to do that.
Do you have any uh weekend dates available there? Maybe a Saturday morning?
Yeah, it'd be this Saturday.
I think it's great to have the city attorney for a time for the new council.
Is it the twentieth?
Yep.
December or, excuse me, November the twentieth?
Yep.
Is anyone available, November the twentieth, to do the sunshine training?
It's gonna be four hours.
Four hours, yes.
It's not exactly four hours, but it's four fifty minutes blocks. Basically, two hundred minutes, okay?
Yes, we need a motion for that?
Alright, great, I'll set it up, um and um appreciate if you could excuse me, I do have something I gotta do.
Absolutely.
And that's put to the city manager's decision.
What time?
Earlier better, you know, um they they wanted to do it at eight o'clock and and.
Eight o'clock works for me, eight o'clock, eight o'clock. Mark, did you have something for Jerry's time? Have something for him?
No, I can just bring it up then.
Well, that concludes our regular agenda. Got the update from the city manager?
Um just one thing I had to, you talked about, because I was getting with the city clerk about her finding some things on the city league of cities to get out to them. Quick, because I talked to a couple of them, you know, that of course they don't know the sunshine law, so we could run that by Jerry just to. So they have some idea up front, and then I took the online one last year and, you know, I know all that Jerry teaches. But the um public records, which I was pretty up on being overseeing, the overseers at sheriff's office, that's really good too, so.
Sure.
Even taking Jerry's, the free online one, four hours is, I don't know if you you all took that last year, but I thought it was awesome.
I've done the online one probably half the time, Jerry's probably half the time, um I will say Jerry's uh obviously a little bit boring and convenient. Because everybody has to meet at the same time, but I I think classes is far superior than the online class, you know, plus. The online, there's not a huge requirement to actually participate, so.
True.
First time, I think, prefer to have the attorney there so they can actually ask questions and have somebody.
Yeah, it's rare that we have three new council members, so, especially the first time out, I think it'd be best for everybody to.
Yeah, no, I wasn't meaning that, Jerry, I just meant in addition to that, they sure, they hit out a lot of public records and that's a huge thing in itself.
Okay.
Um. Just uh a quick good thing here, um I told the mayor that I met with um Casey Hart from um TDC. And for those of you new here, the TDC that um who has partnered with Airstream Ventures, that the BOCC. That the county has hired to bring in uh more uh sports-related stuff into the the county. They've uh point or taken um, there's a gonna be a jet ski race, it's gonna be in April, it's gonna be held. Right here at on our lake across the street, and actually I met with them about a week and a half ago. Because Joel, who was working for them, left and went to a another company, so the CEO came. And when we walked over there, they couldn't believe what a venue this is gonna be, because it's kinda looking down into the stadium. And they said, man, this is great, these teams are gonna think it's great, and we got talking some more. And they talked about, hey, why don't we try to get it so Avon Park is one weekend and the following weekend at Sebring. Will keep all the race teams right here in the county, rent rooms, eat now and that stuff, so they were really excited and I. I talked to Bill Jarrett, who's talking about possibly teaming up with the the um Spartan races. And he said, yeah, they were excited about our venue here in Avon Park, so this is gonna be in in April and um. You've already pretty much committed to the ten thousand dollars, so the CRA is actually gonna be on CBS. Um and we'll get about a ninety-second overview of Avon Park, so it's it's, it's some good stuff. And when I was there, they were talking about using our park for different things, and as I talked to Mary, you know, music, whatever. That we could get people downtown, so it was a really good meeting, um I don't know if you wanna talk about some of the other things down here, the brick building. I don't wanna go into big, long things, when we put it on another agenda and I'll have the whole packet about it, but do you want me to put it back out to an RFP for now?
I say so, um for the rest of the council that may not have been here, this has been a very tedious ongoing project. And uh there's not a real great answer for it, so you're kind of uh hampered either way. If the city keeps the building and tries to renovate it, you're gonna be in for a million bucks, if you try to sell it. People aren't too interested in buying it, because it's gonna cost them a million bucks to fix it, so. The best option we really have at this point is to hope that uh someone takes it off our hands and actually brings it back in private hands. So they could put businesses in there and have people rent the upstairs apartments and get it back on the tax roll, so. It's, it is sort of kicking the can down the road in in one way, but we also do have a potential that someone good would come by and put a good bid on it. So maybe my advice is to put it out for one more round, you have a suggestion of how many days to put it out for?
I think sixty. And then the next question is the termite issue, because it's affecting the other stores around. I saw somebody cross it, the um the other street, it tended there, so I don't know if they're saying termites or not, but.
Yeah.
And that's when we looked at it last year, quote was about twenty-five thousand dollars or just a little less, so. We might, if we're gonna do that, probably have to bid just on that, if we wanna do that, or we wanna wait for sixty days.
I would say wait, let's try to.
At this point.
Put it on the next person.
Okay.
Is there another way we can want higher marketing person to uh try and promote that sale of the building? Somebody would come in and they'll be able to put it out countrywide, nationwide, whatever to other people other than. State of Florida, so to speak.
On that note, uh I did talk to a couple of real estate offices about that, uh a couple of agents and um also a couple of brokers. So one of the things that's working against us right now is it's not on the MLS. And the reason why it's not on the MLS is because we haven't, you know, signed an agreement with a broker. The problem with doing that is uh it's a city-owned building, so we can't really just set a price and put it out. So I was gonna talk to Jerry, which I haven't done yet, see if, okay, we put it out and we tried the bid process a couple of times, at what point? Do we have the leadway to try something different?
Right.
So I legally, I don't know how bound we are to having to do this process, but if it was out with a broker and we hadn't agreed upon price. You're gonna get it before more eyes, also, the real estate agents are gonna know how much money is in for them to sell that property.
Okay, I agree with that.
And the last time there was a real estate agent, one that sells a lot of property here that was interested in. I let him know we had a lot of people looking to do stuff, but.
Sure.
They weren't interested.
If someone looks at where, they're basically doing you a favor, right, you know, there's not much.
You'll get a broker out of New York or something.
Yeah, or Miami probably.
Okay, that's a good.
Seems like everything's getting bought by someone in Miami.
And there was about two in Miami, there's two that I called, the rest in Miami, but they never put in a bid.
Right, and ideally, if there's a wealthy, good-hearted soul around here that is local and cares about the area, that would be the ideal person, so.
We have some, somebody worked with a sheriff department to arrest it.
Maybe, don't know.
The last thing I wanna add, basically the presentation by Craig here, who I haven't got to meet for a year and a half because of COVID, but um. I asked for him to wait off to come to this one when we had three new council members, because I think you probably understand how important the stormwater is. I hate using the word I, because it has nothing about me, but when I got here, we were way, way behind. And um we wouldn't, he's, he knows it, and we, even though we hire his firm, he's a engineer for him, we get paid. We wouldn't have had this permit without him, without his urging, and without Robert and. without his urging and without Robert and Rick, we didn't even have anybody that was stormwater certified, Rick and Robert, well, actually we brought on Randy and believe it or not, he was certifying his last job, but he, he hasn't done any of them, but, um, it's a really big thing and we got two positions last year, that, that's their job, is stormwater and they have to learn along with their boss, so as he said, he said the permit now is harder and like, wow, this one wasn't easy. So, um, but now, hey, you might work for the city and that, that doesn't mean you do, you, you would do a good job, you did a great job and I appreciate it. We wouldn't have the permit without them or without your help, we'd probably be in trouble with D E P already, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else to get to say?
No.
I think, and a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, please.
Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned.